Uh, Madam Clerk, if you would. The next item is, yes, number one. Number one on the agenda is 2017, Mayor Boyer, who was gone for the 2017, City Council, we hate this guy. All right. Is there motion?
Move adoption.
Okay. A motion by Counselor, how many second by Counselor Finn, on the motion, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I would like to, um, get into, um, going for election for her second for as a resident of the city council, um, our, uh, work five hours of cursing duty. Um, although I have to be the full disclosure or day jobs in some areas sometimes.
Thank you for being here about all the my sugar. I want you.
State House main service gives in fact, I oftentimes make that some of those categories. When you mount, I think that she has established, um, again, there's a, and then it's only the government's thing and not the artist, um, Washington, so, uh, proving self-worthy of this past year. So it's my honor to present nomination personally with you.
I'd like to, um, I want to be able to second motion and do a big job since I've been here and, um, continue to take your jobs to the, and I move also to both motions and call for the roll.
Okay. Thanks very much. For those of you at home who don't know, I am, uh, I work for the IRS every day. No. I know, I will take that out of the word to go back. Um, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Um, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll and it is necessary to say, Michael Hamper, Kirsten Hughes. Thank you.
Counselor Pro.
Kirsten Hughes.
Counselor Warner.
Kirsten Hughes.
Counselor Finn.
Kirsten Hughes.
Counselor Harris.
Kirsten Hughes.
Counselor Clark.
Kirsten Hughes.
Counselor Newell.
Kirsten Hughes.
Counselor Roman.
Kirsten Hughes.
Kirsten Hughes.
Kirsten, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure and I will endeavor to try to keep the meetings as orderly as possible. But you all make it so busy, so thank you. Uh, all right. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item on the agenda is 2017, Mayor Boyer, who was gone for the 2017, City Council, we hate this guy.
All right. Is there motion?
Move adoption.
Okay. Uh, motion by Counselor, how many second by Counselor Finn, on the motion, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Newell.
Yes.
Counselor Roman.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is on the grade 2017.
We have the reading in place next minute.
Okay. Motion of waive the reading by Counselor Pro and we will put this into, uh, finance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to finance.
Okay. Next on the agenda is on the fourth, 2017, that's their, their role.
We call waive the reading in the hearing, now the president, we, uh, brought Malo from the Quinte Department to make a presentation.
Great. All right. Thank you. And Eric, yes.
Who's that? I said, I'm just an Eric.
Oh, you should. Hobbies. How's Ron? How are you?
Good. Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you.
Good evening to you members of the city council. Um, my name is Robert Malo. I'm a principal planner for the Quinte Planning and Development Department. Uh, the item we're for tonight, a tax increment exemption agreement, is intended to support the creation of mixed income workforce housing in the city and provide an opportunity to revitalize a pledged vacant site that otherwise is unlikely to be redeveloped. The genesis of this proposal is the Quinte Housing Production Plan, which was approved by the city council and by, say, in 2016, after a lengthy community engagement process. The Housing Production Plan affirmed Quincy's commitment towards supporting the creation of quality housing opportunities for both households of all incomes types of mobility. It also affirmed Quincy's commitment towards achieving and maintaining the Chapter Forty B subsidized Housing Inventory's 10% goal, identifying appropriate development sites to address void and revitalize neighborhoods, and creating incentives and leveraging outside resources to do so. To advance the goals of the Housing Production Plan, the city then created a housing development incentive plan and zone. And this zone is located, uh, in the east Howard Street corridor of Quincy Point. Uh, that plan was approved by the city council in December of 2016. Eligible projects proposed within this zone have the opportunity to access state and local incentives needed to create mixed income residential growth that the market couldn't otherwise support, thereby promoting neighborhood stabilization, economic development, private investment, and a diversified housing stock. The project under consideration for this tax increment exemption agreement, called Watson, advances these goals. The Watson project has already received a special permit from Quincy Planning Board in 2015, creating 140 new residential units for diverse demographic in both market rate and rent restricted formans. Uh, the project, if built, will also increase the city's subsidized housing inventory from 9.6% to 9.9%, just under that 10% save goal. Uh, the project will also provide a preference for up to 70% of the units set aside for households earning 50% or less of the area median income that already live or work in the city. By our, by the city's analysis, the project will result in a net increase in property taxes paid compared to that of the existing vacant property that is currently on the site. What I would like to do is introduce the project's co-sponsor, Robert Corley, from his, who is the executive director of Neighbors of Southern Mass, who provide more information on the project and will be providing a powerful presentation.
Before you start, I just want to recognize former, uh, board four counselor Brian Conley over here in the, uh, front row. We just noticed him, he snuck in.
Thank you.
Actually, Madam President, Brian is our counsel of the DLA fiber.
Oh, okay. Good. Good, good, good. Well, lucky you have a good, you brought in a right now.
Yes. He is excellent.
He's billiard.
I'm certainly disappointed.
He was far out, so never get that off.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Madam Counselor. Again, my name is Robert Corley. I'm the executive director of Neighbors of Southern Mass. Um, I've been working in the city here for nineteen years and, um, this is actually the first opportunity I've had to address this audience, so I really appreciate the time tonight. And, um, I'm joined, as you mentioned, by Brian Conley and also by our partner, Quinte Development, Vice President, um, E. Curtis, who's here for my life. Um, so, uh, as Roger's outlined, I'm just going to go over a couple of things in this little slide presentation about, for some of the council members who are unfamiliar with Neighbors, so briefly we'll be who we are and what we do, and then talk a little bit about the project a little bit tonight. Um, so Neighbors of Southern Mass was established in West Quincy in 1981, um, and we've been operating a variety of different services in the city for thirty-five years. Um, we have a very strong history and partnership in the city with other local news service groups. Um, we developed 227 different apartments in the, uh, in the city, uh, that's scattered around twenty-three different buildings in the city and many different neighborhoods. Um, our headquarters is currently located, uh, located at 422, uh, Washington Street, Quincy Point. We've been there for over twelve years and, uh, have focused a lot of our development work within Quincy Point area over the last, um, ten years or so. Um, I'll briefly go over some of these things. Uh, Neighbors, the partnership of local government, residents, and businesses, um, and some of the numbers here you see that we've accomplished over the last thirty-five years. We've invested over ninety-three million dollars in the community. Um, we've actually prepared eleven hundred homes in Quincy, um, through, uh, we have money programs and emergency grants, um, and we've also educated over ten thousand new homeowners in the area, um, as we can see in the most statistics. Um, in Quincy Point, uh, we, I highlighted here in this, uh, slide presentation, a couple of projects we've completed in the recent years. Uh, this is a before, after, the whole picture being the before. This is an abandoned property that had been vacant for several years, that could purchase and redevelop into twenty-four units of affordable housing. Um, next, uh, property here you see is, uh, was an existing property that was affordable and was going to expire. It's a seventy-eight minute property, seventy-eight minute, uh, property, not far from, uh, East Howard site we're talking about tonight, that was purchased and renovated, uh, and finished that, uh, just last year. Uh, next slide, you'll see some, uh, other work we've done for, uh, veteran homes in, in the area here, including multiple works. Right to the left here on the slide is a project we did on this alley street, um, just two years ago, on another abandoned, dilapidated, sort of, left over site, um, it was littered with billboards and other things. Um, that property was, uh, uh, as you see here, a ribbon cutting, opened two years ago as for, uh, homeless individuals and veterans. And that leads us, um, to this next project, uh, which is the Watson, as Robert referred to earlier. This is a new construction property. Uh, it's an existing, vacant, uh, abandoned, dilapidated site, um, has been like that for decades. It's across from, uh, Shigard, the main gate area. Um, the proposed project is for a hundred and forty units of new construction, uh, twenty-eight of which would be marked at eighty-six, for workforce, uh, housing, and twenty-six are affordable housing. So this is a, a unique blend of three types of housing in one. Um, this is an overview, a top view of the project. This slide is looking north on East Howard Street. Uh, down, you can see the older, uh, Shigard building to the right, uh, here, they're still abandoned and voided. Um, this property also known as, um, on the market as a private deal, a market deal for a couple of years, but didn't happen. Um, and that's when we got the quality project. So summary of some of the local benefits of this project that developed, um, were developed. Um, like I said, it's a neat mix of, of market housing, workforce housing, and affordable housing, uh, all together. As far as I know, this hasn't been done in the city prior, um, and we're excited to make that happen, especially in the Quincy Point area. Uh, the project will leverage and invest forty-five million to redevelop properties, which I mentioned, been abandoned and voided for several years, um, or decades. And then, uh, the Watson generated over six hundred and fifty thousand in permits in 2017, uh, in terms of fees. Um, the next slide is the housing development incentive zone, um, which, uh, discussed, uh, briefly, one, uh, the council approved, uh, earlier in December of, uh, last year. Um, essentially, the program works, the projects developed in a locally approved H-6 zone, which is one of this area, this property's old donation zone, is elevated above two million in state subsidies for the redevelopment of the project site, which does the state, it stays under the deal, and sort of reciprocal, multiple investments, and negotiated local tax incentive, um, exemption, exemption agreement, or a tie agreement for up to twenty year, for up to a twenty-year period is, uh, is required for the state lever. So a local tie agreement is part of the H-6 process that's, uh, that happens, and that's why we're here tonight. So, um, the request tonight is, uh, we've, we've worked with the planning department, and what we're asking for is a ten-year tie agreement to support this H-6 eligible project, the Watson. Uh, this has been minimal allowed to leverage the state H-6 and workforce, uh, funds that are used to fund this forty-five million dollar development. Um, a couple of things to highlight, in no time, the property will pay less taxes than it currently paid. Uh, the Watson will pay 20% more taxes in year one. Instead, we increase payment each year, so full block fee taxes are paid in year eleven. Uh, in year eleven, the city will receive three hundred and thirty-five thousand per year more in tax revenue than it would otherwise, on the site as determined sits. Um, in aggravated development, uh, we produce nearly four million of additional tax revenue by 2039. Uh, and the last couple of points is, is demonstrated by the numbers that are stated, the development will generate, you know, significant tax rep in the near term and the long term. Without the cert, without the certainty of this tie agreement, um, you will not be able to build a project that we cannot take construction in terms of financing, uh, it just wouldn't be possible, uh, and you would not also capture the subsidy from the state in terms of long programming. Uh, but if approved, um, you begin construction, uh, as early as March, trying to close this at the end of this month, um, and, uh, I appreciate the consideration, but, uh, thank you for even the support.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, Counselor Pro.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Corley. We've, um, certainly had a, you know, longstanding relationship since, since I've been in, um, been in office and you've always, you've always delivered on all the promises initially, and I, and I respect that, but I appreciate it, the board council. You know, you, you play these conversations, talk about, so I always know kind of what's coming. What I'm feeling in the preliminary stage is maybe what happened. I wonder if that's, it's, uh, that's an art, so, um, good, good, good for you. I knew you pointed out as well, a lot of your portfolio is, like, literally, look at, um, if you get a deep, decent golf shot, you can hit, you know, three or four little properties right off the tee box. So, uh, you guys are here in your home offices in Quincy Point, uh, like I said, you got a robust portfolio throughout, um, throughout the city of Quincy, so you're committed to Quincy, I guess is my point, you know, and, uh, and as a board council, you know, you have to deal with large-scale projects, which is going to motivate, you know, sometimes there's complications, and, you know, there's, uh, in different circumstances, it's a little more challenging to get, to get a hold of folks who are in charge of, and, you know, for me, this is an additional level of comfort, you know, like I described down to Washington Street, you know, we can have a real conversation. You know, with, uh, with the support of this council, several weeks back, we allowed, you know, the product moving forward and secure, um, for it to become available for H-6, you know, has led us to where we are. See, um, you know, project specific, I know that this will be a high-quality project, I think it's in the top three, bottom three blocks. But as we spoke about in subsequent meetings, I think the goal there is, we're recognizing any project that is like a, a true poster child of diversity when it comes to housing. It's not just that, uh, you have a great residential development, they achieve, they're realizing in the downtown, but, you know, a lot of what you do in terms of, uh, your, your offer and, you know, is for folks who are making that workforce type of income. Those folks who are just, you know, follow the everyday average, average citizens of Quincy, um, I think that that's just so important to keep in mind, that you think of all of this problem, that we are, we're servicing, you know, a demographic across and all in the sector, but including, you know, what Mr. Mall, I said that, that, um, affordable housing with seven percent, that the hell of Quincy residents. I just think that's so important. Um, in addition, you know, you, you've had some pretty productive conversations, trying to create local jobs for, 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 so, you know, that's been working very well. There's a lot of others that come to this project, but I think one, and I don't know how, um, much of it, I speculate, again, the theme, you know, was, um, the substance of the new task, but, you know, this puts the city in a position to essentially make itself, and then, you know, what you thought, what you thought, that kind of, you know, the creation of, of the Watson. So, you know, outside of being, you know, a win for the district, in hopes, and I hope, and you hope, and you've had this conversation, it doesn't, but, you know, this is the, uh, you know, project that unlocks, unlocks the value of, uh, for, I think that's, that's what we're, uh, what we're aiming for there. And, um, you know, I don't know if any of my fellow counselors have any questions, and I have had very lengthy conversations prior to you, you know, I spent about a year on the promise of this particular project, so, I'm excited to see it going, you know, obviously turn, turn the floor over to anybody else, but I will, uh, I'm watching for a little bit.
Motion to the board council, Secretary of Council, and, and how they can unlock that.
Yeah, I think, and Robert, I just need to congratulate you for a lot of your vision that you've set, the relation to the Neighbors, and also, you know, you're going to survive more than you're here for all those years that you've followed with it. But, um, the thing that's so unique about this project, I mean, it's kind of a little of a connection, what we talked about earlier with the downtown, right, is that the reason we don't have a lot of moderate, to low, um, income housing is because it's economically not feasible to develop and, and grow. And essentially, what you've done here is, is taken, made use of a resource, I think, that, um, I don't know how many other projects there have been out there like it, but you've certainly exploited it and taken advantage of it in order to create a mixed-use type of, of mix of moderate, moderate, and affordable housing together, in, in a way that, that, again, even within the so-called TIF, so to speak, the truth is that you're adding revenue that otherwise wouldn't have been in place there, as well as, as I think the council of more to has pointed out, giving us a buffer against kinds of, you know, not always well-intentioned types of poses that come in and try to utilize forty meters ways to force other kinds of projects or things, so, I just wanted to congratulate you, and of course acknowledge my classmates from, uh, the city council, and of course, we serve together with the former counselor, Joe Newton, but certainly welcome you back to the chamber of this, thank you for your co-sess, thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Finn, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, just a second motion. I will say, uh, that Neighbors is one of the best nonprofit organizations in the city of Quincy, and I'm always so impressed, you know, I mean, we talked about, I'm working for the Health Plus, which you feel organization has represented too, has really, um, been a benchmark in our community. As one of our show notes, as one of our municipal designated community health and development organizations, we've been top notch, and in the problem that Counselor Paul said, has , has, um, meant to surpass my situation expectations. You know, what you've done, the former veterans, post, uh, the Republican Post Town and House Net Core, single-family home, disabled, better measured in downtown, each neighborhood of the city, you toss through the work you've done, you've taken light properties, improvement. But this is a game changer. This forty-five million dollar body for your organization to be one of the first bodies to come in the state with mixed use workforce development, and, uh, and it's, and it's massive, I think, that you're on after, is a real game changer. I'm very excited, I was there for a few of the ribbon cuttings on the other projects in the council of Forbes District, and to see the improvement that it's made, and not have this come online, I'm so honored, the organization functions, obviously, with Quincy. Maybe a lot of times nonprofit organizations are misunderstood as to what you qualify for, and what, um, incentives you get to take advantage of, what you're coming in with tonight is very conservative as to what your organization would be eligible for, and the, the properties we maintain, and in our city, you make our city whole through our, through property taxes where you know the instances which you need to. And so, that's something that I highly value, you as a community partner, for Neighbors as an organization. So, I'm pleased to be supporting any verification, see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Um, and again, um, just to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, uh, you guys are great community partners, and I've said before, up here, in terms of, uh, being a board council, I think the, the best thing I can say about anyone, uh, from this perspective, is that you're a good community partner, uh, because that means a lot to a board council who's dealing with different issues in a neighborhood and always trying to, uh, make things better and solve problems, to say that someone's a good community partner means they stand for those same principles and they're working just as hard, um, to, to meet those same ends. So, um, that's about the best compliment I can pay you, um, that you guys are a good community partner, and you do tremendous work, and certainly, uh, be in support of this tonight, uh, turning, you know, what was a blight into affordable housing to workforce housing. Uh, and I want to take the opportunity again to talk about affordable housing, workforce housing. We're not talking about people who don't work, and we're talking about affordable housing. We're not talking about people who don't have jobs, we're, we're talking about folks who are below median income in Quincy. We're talking about people who, uh, who live off of teacher salaries, firefighter salaries. We're talking about the middle class, we're talking about, um, working families. That's what we want in Quincy, that's what we want to keep in Quincy, and that's, I think, what we will be doing tonight with a vote, supporting this, is, is standing to that policy. Um, so I'm, again, like I said, I'm happy to vote for this. I do think it's worth noting, and we discussed this last week, um, I, I have a bit of a reservation about the way in which we're supporting this tonight, uh, through the TIF, because of where the TIF money comes from. The TIF money essentially comes out of the pool of tax money, and again, we're, we won't be getting any less than we've been getting from the property, so, overall, it's by far a, a plus, but, as a policy, I would much rather, and it would be my preference, that we up the contribution levels that we, we require of for-profit developments in the city to offset the creation of workforce and affordable housing in the city. I would rather the fund be bigger for you to tap, you to be able to tap more money from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, that's a more realistic approach, because we know they're not actually building themselves, but that, that there's more money for you to tap from that fund, rather than using TIF money, because TIF, it's coming out the other end, right? I mean, I'd rather take it from the developers than from the pool of tax money. Um, so I, I, I think it's worth noting that, because that's a policy, I don't, in the eight years that I've been up here, or seven years that I've been up here, I don't know that we've ever done a TIF for a project like this, and it's worthy, by all means, but it's, but it's a different policy, um, than what we've ever done in the past, and it's something to keep in mind, because I expect that this will be supported by my colleagues, um, it's something to think about moving forward, um, should there be a discussion in terms of affordable housing requirements, whether it be downtown or elsewhere in the city, and, um, maybe making those a little bit more stringent as the city becomes, uh, more and more expensive, for working families to continue to live here and survive and be successful and thrive with the community, we want them here. So, um, again, thank you for all you do, and I'll be happy to support this tonight. Keep up the good work, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
All right. See you, no one, uh, not for, uh, Counselor.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Roman.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good to see you. It's timely.
Very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
Number five, I think, 2017, zero, zero, five.
Yes.
Oh, three, two. Oh, Mr. Hyde, if you could, if you could, uh, uh.
Great. Thank you. Hello.
Good evening, Councilors. Well, I'm, uh, all right. Well, I'm, uh, well, I'm, uh, 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 I'm, uh,[649.12]
What we're asking for is a ten-year tie agreement to support this H-ship eligible project with Watson. This has been minimal allowed to leverage the state H-ship and workforce funds that are used to fund this whole development. A couple of things to highlight, at no time will the property pay less taxes than it currently paid. The Watson will pay twenty percent more taxes in year one, instead of increasing payment each year until full property taxes are paid in year eleven. In year eleven, the city will receive three hundred thirty-five thousand per year more in tax revenue than it would otherwise from the site as it currently sits. In aggregate, the development will produce nearly four million additional tax revenue by 2039. And the last couple of points is demonstrated by the numbers that I just gave, the development will generate, you know, significant tax revenue in the near term and the long term. Without the certainty of this tie agreement, you will not be able to build a project. You cannot take construction in terms of financing. It just wouldn't be possible, and you would not also capture the subsidy from the state to program. But if approved, you begin construction as early as March, trying to close this at the end of this month. And I appreciate the consideration, and I thank you for your continued support.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilor.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Mr. Foley. We've certainly had a longstanding relationship since I've been in office, and you've always delivered on what we promised initially, and I don't respect that, but I appreciate it, the Board Counselor. You play these conversations, try them out, so I always know kind of what time. What I'm feeling in the preliminary stage is maybe what happened. That's an art, so good for you. I knew you pointed out as well, a lot of your portfolios are literally within, if you got a decent golf shot, you can hit, you know, three or four little properties right off the tee box. So you guys are here in your home offices in Quincy Point. Like I said, you got a robust portfolio throughout the city of Quincy, so you're committed to Quincy, I guess is my point. And as a board counselor, when you deal with large-scale projects, which is going to move, you know, sometimes there's complications, and there's, in different circumstances, it's a little more challenging to get a hold of full tour and job of. For me, this is an additional level of comfortability, like I described down Washington Street. You know, we can have a real conversation. You know, with the support of this council, several weeks back, we allowed, you know, the product to move forward and secure, or become available for H-ship on the way through where we are. You know, project-specific, I know this will be a high-quality project, I think it's going to involve about a million bucks. As we spoke about subsequent meetings, I think the goal there is, we're recognizing a project that is like a true post child, a diversion when it comes to housing. It's not just that high-end, market-grade residential development that you're seeing in the downtown, but, you know, a lot of what you do in terms of your offer and your public is for folks who are making that workforce-type of income. It goes through this blue ball, everyday average citizens of Quincy. I think that that's just so important to keep in mind when you think about this problem, that we are servicing, you know, the demographic across all in this sector, including what Mr. Mallard said, that affordable housing is seventy percent, that the hell would be relevant? I just think that's so important. In addition, you had some pretty productive conversations, created over the job of labor, so that's going to work out very well. There's a lot of problems that come with this project, but I think one, I don't know how much we're particular here, you know, was in the subsequent years passed, but, you know, this puts the city in a position to essentially find itself in, and what you thought, really, that kind of social exploration was the Watson. So outside of being, you know, a win for the district, in hopes and I hope that you hope that you have this conversation, it doesn't, you know, this is the project that unlocks the value of our, or I think that's what we're aiming for here. And, you know, I don't know if any of my fellow councils have any questions. You and I have had very lengthy conversations prior to you. You know, I spent about a year on this particular project, so excited to see it going. Obviously, it turned the floor over to anybody else, but I will go down and watch on the floor.
Motion to approve it, Councilor, second to the Council, and Councilor, and Councilor Harris.
Yeah, I think, Rob, I just need to congratulate you for a lot of the vision that you set, the relationships here with works, and also, you know, your ability to survive more than you were here for all those years that you've fallen with it. But the thing that's so unique about this project, I mean, it's kind of a little bit of a connection with what we talked about earlier with the downtown, right? The reason we don't have a lot of moderate-to-mild income housing is because it's economically not feasible to develop and grow. And essentially, what you've done here is taken the use of a resource, I think, that, I don't know how many other projects have been out there likely, but you've certainly exploited it and taken advantage of it in order to create an excuse type of mix of moderate, moderate and affordable housing together in a way that, again, even within the so-called TIF, so to speak, the truth is that you're adding revenue that otherwise wouldn't have been in place there, as well as, as I think the Council of Ward Two has pointed out, giving us a buffer against kinds of, you know, not always well-intentioned types of clauses that come in and try to utilize forty years' way to force other kinds of projects or things. So I just wanted to congratulate you, and of course acknowledge my classmate from the City Council, and of course, we serve together with the former counselor, Joe Newton, now that, certainly to welcome you back to the Chamber of Legends. Thank you, everyone, to the City. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilor, and Councilor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, just a second motion. I will say that Neighborhoods want to leave us from profit relations in the city of Quincy. And I'm always so impressed, you know, when we talked about a wonderful housing trust, which you feel organization has represented too, has really been a benchmark in our community. As one of our show notes, as one of our municipal designated community health and health organizations, you've been top notch, and given problems that have cost us a whole set, has met to surpass my situation expectations. You know, what you've done, former veterans, post, you're definitely deposed now in housing net for a single-family home, and is able to better pressure in each other town. Each neighborhood in the city talks through the work you've done, you've taken white copies of improvement. But this is a game changer. This forty-five million dollar body figure renovation to be one of the first projects to come in the state, which exceeds workforce development, and it's massive funding that you're going after, is a real game changer. I'm very excited that they have for a few of the moving cuttings on the other projects in the Council of Works District, and to see the improvement that it's made and how this comes online. I'm so honored to be an organization functions in the city of Quincy. Maybe a lot of times, nonprofit organizations are misunderstood as to what you qualify for, and what incentives you get to take advantage of. What you're coming in with tonight is very conservative as to what your organization could be eligible for. And the local properties you maintain within our city, you make our city whole through property taxes where, you know, it says what you need to. And so that's something that I highly value, you as a community partner, for Neighborhoods as an organization. So I'm pleased to be supporting that certification, see you next week.
Thank you. Councilor.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. And again, just to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, you guys are great community partners, and I've said before, up here in terms of being a board counselor, I think the best thing I can say about anyone from this perspective is that you're a good community partner, because that means a lot to a board counselor who's dealing with different issues in a neighborhood and always trying to make things better and solve problems. To say that someone's a good community partner means they stand for those same principles and they're working just as hard to meet those same ends. So that's about the best compliment I can pay you, that you guys are a good community partner, and you do tremendous work. Certainly, in support of this tonight, turning, you know, what was a blight into affordable housing, to workforce housing. And I want to take the opportunity again to talk about affordable housing, workforce housing. We're not talking about people who don't work, and we're talking about affordable housing. We're not talking about people who don't have jobs. We're talking about folks who are below median income in Quincy. We're talking about people who live off of teacher salaries, firefighter salaries. We're talking about the middle class, we're talking about working families. That's what we want in Quincy, that's what we want to keep in Quincy, and that's, I think, what we will be doing tonight with the vote supporting this, is standing for that policy. So again, like I said, I'm happy to vote for this. I do think it's worth noting, and we discussed this last week, I have a bit of a reservation about the way in which we're supporting this tonight through the TIF, because of where the TIF money comes from. The TIF money essentially comes out of the pool of tax money. And again, we won't be getting any less than we've been getting from the property, so overall, it's by far a plus. But as a policy, I would much rather, and it would be my preference, that we up the contribution levels that we require of for-profit developments in this city to offset the creation of workforce and affordable housing in the city. I would rather the fund be bigger for you to tap, you to be able to tap more money from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's a more realistic approach, because we know they're not actually building themselves, but that there's more money for you to tap from that fund rather than using TIF money, because TIF, it's coming out the other end, right? I mean, I'd rather take it from the developers than from the pool of tax money. So I think it's worth noting that, because that's a policy, I don't, in the eight years that I've been up here, or seven years that I've been up here, I don't know that we've ever done a TIF for a project like this, and it's worthy by all means. But it's a different policy than what we've ever done in the past. It's something to keep in mind, because I expect that this will be supported by my colleagues. It's something to think about moving forward, should there be a discussion in terms of affordable housing requirements, whether it be downtown or elsewhere in the city, and maybe making those a little bit more stringent as the city becomes more and more expensive, or working families to continue living here and survive and be successful and thrive in the community, we want them here. So again, thank you for all you do, and I'll be happy to support this tonight. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Ari, so you know, and now, help with projects. Help with projects.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Lefarge.
Yes.
Councilor Leeang.
Yes.
Councilor Stonewood.
Yes.
President Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you. It's timely.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next item, Ms. Forrest.
Number five on the agenda, two thousand seventeen, zero zero five.
Yes.
Oh, three. Oh, Mr. Hayden, please keep up the ground.
Great, thank you. Hello.
Evening, Councilors. Well, Paul Heinz, Mr. Publicist.
Oh, right. How about, I'm still a boy, I know, he's still a boy.
I've met two of my colleagues from the Publicist Park here, Darry Pettit, Director of the Mary, and Tony Valverde, who is the foreman of the plumbing crew. They asked questions with the Councilors, if we got them at valise, whatever, that it provides, that request for funding. As you know, this came about through a comprehensive water testing from the schools, shaded by Neko, in coordination with the school department, Dr. Murphy Faro. We found a number of fixtures in the school buildings that don't meet the current water quality standards for lead and copper. And while we're in there with assistance to pot, anticipating a reset of the acceptable level of lead in the water, which is consequently possible, we anticipate the reduction by all the state and the federal government. So when you have assistance to pot, the building's drained, we want to go further and bring them down to the next anticipated level. And at all times, be mindful of the EPA's mantra that no lead is safe, so do your best to get out all of the lead that we possibly can. So the funding request that we did put in for the two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for free cash, pre-appropriation, as we stated, twenty-five thousand dollars is to fix immediately at the Montclair School. The nurse's office bathroom is non-operable. It's original to the building in like nineteen ninety or something, and it's literally like one of his grandmother's old box chain equipments. The rest of it, all relates to the plumbing issues in the schools, the drain down of the buildings, the changing of the non-functional surface rounds and fixture to the water valve valves, that would help remain going forward in all of these buildings. And then the replacement of the public components, all the bubblers being beaten, and the faucet sets in each sink that are on our priority list.
Thank you. All thank you. Anyone make a motion? Motion approved by Councilor Forrest, second by Councilor Harris. Motion. All right. Oh, Councilor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to just say, I want to thank the administration for moving this forward with doing the lead and copper testing through all the schools, taking the initiative a step further, doing that even though you only have to do two. And that's very important, I think, as a moral obligation to children that are going to their schools and the bubblers that they're drinking that we know ahead of time, that now we're in the second stage of, we know where the problem is, we know where we need to mitigate. Full support for this. I look at it as a moral obligation, whatever power you are, whatever things you believe in, I believe that every kid that goes to a school should be able to be safe, this is a safety measure, I guess they could say. Just a question for you, of the two hundred seventy-five thousand, will you have to come back to us for anything else, or is this the final announcement?
We believe, after our meetings in house last week, that this will do it for us to get us to the point zero zero five level. We do not have any reasonable expectation that the federal law, the state, is going to set the levels any lower than that. If this funds available at the end, we may actually even try to hit those ones and take them out. Our goal, as we stated at the parents' meetings, for us on eight, and to other people, is to get everything that we can, chase it as far as we can. If we can't control it, we'll have to control the pace of the speed of the co-op, or we can do what we can in our buildings.
I want to thank you for everything, looking in full support for this, and looking forward to making sure everything's safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for supporting us.
Okay, Councilor Palatine.
Could I just inquire, perhaps, to the auditor or someone else, how much money you have?
That's not a good question.
There is over a million dollars right now, that after these next two appropriations, they're going to be one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
If the next two appropriations are...
If these two appropriations pass.
It says a million dollars right now.
It's over a million.
And where did that come from?
From the free cash.
Yeah, do we know what that's settled from?
That is settled from, at the end of last fiscal year, we go through this whole process, we add on what we have left in our reserves, what we have significantly outstanding, if we had any, anything that was in the negative, it's a whole process that we go through with the market revenue, and we get certified with the free cash.
So that was certified at the end of last fiscal year?
That was certified in December. We had a meeting, it was over over four million dollars, and then in December, we had an appropriation to close out, I think over three million dollars in the store, so that left us going to be a billion, one million, one million dollars.
Do you happen to know, and this is kind of a trick question to you, but do you happen to, off the cuff question, but do you know where we're at with Isaac's budget right now? Do you manage?
Right now, it's, I believe, we have spent about three hundred thousand dollars, that's not including this past one storm. So there, the budget of, I think, is two million, one hundred thousand.
Oh, very similar.
They also did have encumbrances for contractors, so I'm trying to think, maybe about three hundred thousand dollars, that's, you know, one million.
So roughly, we're probably about halfway through that budget?
I would say so, yes.
Have to, not having the bills for...
We don't have the bills for this basketball.
Right. So clearly, that would probably be the best thing. Okay. But thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilor Palatine. Madam Parker.
Councilor Pro.
Yes.
Councilor Wood.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Lefarge.
Yes.
Councilor Leeang.
Yes.
Councilor Stonewood.
Yes.
President Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is two thousand seventeen, dash, zero zero six, in appropriations.
Motion to approve by Councilor Forrest. Councilor Forrest.
That is going to finance.
Okay. Thank you, we're toward finance. Thank you. Next item.
Next item on the agenda is a gift from Eastern Bank, five thousand dollars.
Could we have the raising to make sure that Eastern does say, uh, like, mention a gift?
All right.
A gift.
Where are the minutes for the gift? You motion to accept, to make a motion. Motion to accept by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Harris. On the motion, Madam Parker.
Councilor Pro.
Yes.
Councilor Wood.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Lefarge.
Yes.
Councilor Leeang.
Yes.
Councilor Stonewood.
Yes.
Seven minutes.
Next item. Next item is two thousand seventeen, zero zero eight, a gift, you know, to the program.
Okay, motion approved by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Finn. On the motion, Madam Parker.
Councilor Pro.
Yes.
Councilor Wood.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
President.
Councilor Lefarge.
Yes.
Councilor Leeang.
Yes.
Councilor Stonewood.
Yes.
President Lee.
Yes.
Seven minutes.
Next item, Ms. Forrest.
Next item is seven nine on the agenda, a gift, fifty dollars from the end, who is vice president?
Motion approved by Councilor Forrest, seconded by Councilor Finn. On the motion, Madam Parker.
Councilor Pro.
Yes.
Councilor Wood.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Councilor Harris.
Gift, fifty dollars.
Yes, please.
[laughing].
The gift was sent to you.
Yes.
Councilor Leeang.
Councilor Leeang. You want a gift? I'm sorry, oh, of course, yes.
Yes.
Councilor Stonewood.
Yes.
President Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of December nineteenth meeting minutes. It's motion approved by Councilor Lefarge, seconded by Councilor Leeang. All those in favor? I guess, have it published against? No, really, okay, thanks. Communications or reports from the mayor, other city officers, the city board, and Madam Parker.
Yes, thank you. I have traffic in Ward One, Councilor Lefarge installed handicap pocket at twenty-six Stewart Street, Ward Four, Councilor Stonewood, installed two log enter on thirty-four North Farm, intersecting with Warren Street, Monday through Friday, seven AM to nine AM. Ward Six, Councilor Harris, installed low pocket on the even-sided side of Allstead Street from Quincy to address to Tyrrell Street. And Ward Six, Councilor Harris, installed low parking on the south side of Allstead Street from Quincy to address to fifty-four Gackville Street.
Okay, we will refer to ordinance for our... Thank you. Under the business proceeding, reports from committees, Neighborhoods, yes, Councilor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Glad to hear what a board counselor is addressing the faults. It is very... Glad that I, formerly lived on all states, you're my partner, so thank you. We had three public hearings earlier this evening. The first public hearing, which was two thousand sixteen, two five six, was related to the Verizon Wireless permission to exist on interlocating existing utility called small cell wireless antenna. We're going to allow that to stay in committee through the, again, Ward Six counselors' diplomacy, so to speak, that they've agreed apparently to approve, to extend the time, and agreed to, and we'll hold it in committee until at least they get satisfied and send that out to...
Thank you.
The other two hearings, the item was two thousand sixteen, two fifty-seven, which was related to, excuse me, that was related to the public right wing on C Street for Verizon Wireless request permission to install existing utility called a small cell wireless antenna. Again, we have public hearing, I would recommend it.
Motion approved by Councilor Finn, seconded by Councilor Forrest, and motion, Madam Parker.
Councilor Pro.
Yes.
Councilor Wood.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Lefarge.
Yes.
Councilor Leeang.
Yes.
Councilor Stonewood.
Yes.
President Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, two thousand sixteen, two eight eight, which again is relocation of the pole on Elm Street, on the eastbound side of Elm Street to point approximately twelve. It's just from its current location, I have a positive recommendation.
Motion approved by Councilor Finn, seconded by Councilor Harris. On the motion, Madam Parker.
Councilor Pro.
Yes.
Councilor Wood.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Lefarge.
Yes.
Councilor Leeang.
Yes.
Councilor Stonewood.
Yes.
President Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Finn. All right. Presentations and petitioners' memorials are on our monitor. Motion orders are met with, okay, then, Councilor Font.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to put in there, Nancy Byrne just passed away, she was a very good friend of mine, as well as her family, just want to, if you guys can just bring your thoughts, she donated a lot of time to the Sunday Social Services and the Pan-Nash Challenge by Byrne. She said, you know, she leaves her husband Ray, as well as her children, Carrie, Ray, Anne, or Leeang. She was just, I remember her a lot with the pig-skin gallop that she goes to before the Thanksgiving Day game, and I saw her there this past Thanksgiving Day football game, and just a very, you know, very outgoing, happy person, and she graduated Quincy High School in nineteen sixty-eight. Just remembering her, looking at her face right now, thinking of, she's laughing, she's having a couple jokes, and that's how the waitlist is today, earlier, that a couple of the councils were at, that you try to remember the good times. So just keep her in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Font. Of course, thank you, Carrie and his family and the cops. Scheduling committee meetings, public hearings? Yes, Councilor Lefarge.
Early we had the ordinance committee meeting on the LDA, we need to get that on the agenda either making to Council on the twenty-third, or if you can constantly need it by our table, PL, you know, for time, so just to work with the mayor's office online to make sure that's on our next council panel.
Okay. Anybody else scheduling committee meetings? All right, at this time, I'm going to take a motion to return. Councilor Stonewood, you have those in favor? Aye, yeah, yes, happy to have you.